Good morning, and we will call the September 5th, 2023 City Council Meeting to order. I ask Councilmember Julie Holt to leave us our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Bow our heads. Dear God, thank you for this day. Thank you for letting us come here and gather. Please open our ears and close our mouths and let us hear what the city needs from us. And please help us act accordingly and do what's best for our city. Thank you for another day. Thank you for everything you've blessed us with. Please help us lead in serving you first and the city second. Thank you for sending your one and only son to die on the cross to save us from our sins. Please forgive us of our sins, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is a little call. Johnny was hiding back there, but Marcy, she's all Councilmembers present. I couldn't see her. Looked down, I couldn't see. Item four is approval of the minutes for the August 1st, 2023 City Council Meeting. Those meetings, those minutes were sent out to you, emails, so there'd be no additions or corrections. Stand approved as read. Item five is proclamations and recognitions. Now, last, as I come down, that our youth council will line up. Up front here. All right, we have another great group for our 2023, 2024. They were coming juniors, so they also be 24, 25 youth council members. And so he's kind of, I'll introduce you all first, and then raise your hand or step forward and step back. Hannah Vales at Augusta. You got Cameron Hill at Jackson Central Mary High School. Brianna Cross, Jackson Central Mary High School. Precious Baker, JCM Early College High. Erin Rose Core, JCM Early College High. Rand Aljafari, Madison Academic High School. Paige Temple, Madison Academic High School. Addison Coleman, Northside High School. Jewel Robinson, Southside High School. Sarah Simmons, Trinity Christian Academy. Ava Bates, University School of Jackson. And Ellen Driver, University School of Jackson. All right, so as part of coming into the youth council, they are swearing as youth council members. And so y'all raise your right hand. And then repeat after me, according to our last youth council, I spoke too fast, so I will speak slower this time. Say aye and state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Uphold and defend.
Uphold and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Uphold and defend.
Uphold and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Tennessee.
Of the State of Tennessee.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
Therewith.
Therewith.
That I will observe and obey.
That I will observe and obey.
The laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Jackson, Tennessee.
Of the City of Jackson, Tennessee.
That I will faithfully perform and discharge.
The laws and ordinances.
The duties incumbent.
The duties incumbent.
Upon me as a member of the Mayor's Youth Council.
On my way.
Fairly and honestly.
Fairly and honestly.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
For the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, youth council members, if you're going to work. [applause] I think you all will stay there for a second, because parents have their phones up, they want to take pictures, so once we see all the phones come down, then you all can sit down. Sit down, go back to school. All right. So next up, we have invitation for public comments. We do have a sign-up sheet here, and so these sign-up sheets, in accordance with our policy and with state law, have to pertain to the council agenda item. And so there's only one that's filled one out according to the council agenda item, and that is Mr. Charles Rofflin. You want to come up and have three minutes to address the council on your agenda item.
Good morning, council. Thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. I'd like to speak this morning on the slate of officers that was presented. So let me get to the point. I suggest the consideration of committee and board appointees be tabled until more complete and accurate information is included. The following are examples of what I have found in a cursory review of documents. First thing is the tax board, taxi board. Bylaws state the board consists of three members of city councils serving for a year staggered expiration date. All three council board appointees are newly elected. When do each of their terms expire? The bear board, three citizen members are appointed to a one-year term. This implies that the city wants to turn over the board. Are these nominees new, or are they, have they been on the board previously? Keeping Jackson Beautiful Commission. Bylaws state the board consists of 24 board members serving staggered three-year terms. This means the class of eight members, five have currently been nominated. When will the other three be presented for approval? Are there any unexpired terms to be replaced? The bylaws have a provision for a nominating committee, but don't state its size. Who was the nominating committee? Jackson Madison County General Hospital. This appears to be what the website calls West Tennessee Healthcare. I didn't have time to do all the research there, but they did say in the bylaws that there are five elected members for the board, but there's no mention of a city liaison, which is being pointed. Now I come to the budget committee bylaws. They state the board consists of three members of the city council serving with years staggered expiration dates. Two of the three council board appointees are newly elected. When do each of these terms expire? Is Johnny Dodd, the city councilman, a reappointment or a continuation of an unexpired term? Also, the four at-large members are to serve staggered terms. Who are the candidates and what are their terms? Will the city council vote on them sometime? The bylaws state the city council will select members based on the mayor's recommendation. I attended last month's budget committee meeting and found that the officers were appointed during that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rofflin. Time, the three minutes is up.
Well, my point is, in all these cases.
Thank you, Mr. Rofflin.
The board has not fulfilled their responsibility in selecting these officers.
Thank you. All right, move on to item on the first reading.
Mayor, before you do that, I didn't hear you call a name. I have a constituent here, Ms. Charlotte Price, and I talked to her earlier, and she said that she signed the sheet back there, and she may have signed something different or whatever, but she is here, and I would ask that she be heard from.
She signed up to speak on something not germane to the agenda, and so the purpose of the public comment is for agenda items.
Okay, now, I thought that the agenda item includes the second reading of the trash ordinance, anti-litter code.
Okay, so she signed up for bulk waste, she didn't sign up for anti-litter, so she wants to talk about that.
That's the one that she's talking about.
Okay, all right. Ms. Price?
Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, start talking again, Ms. Price, I got a time.
First, I want to say, I'm Charlotte Price, and I'm, I do favor the proposal for the waste.
Anti-litter you talk about.
And what I'm here to speak on is the bulk waste in our neighborhood. The bulk waste is not being picked up like it should be in our neighborhood, and I don't know why. Maybe a lot of it is that the, the waste is, the, there's a lot of, what am I trying to say? There's a lot of landlords in our neighborhoods, or not even in Jackson, Tennessee, and they, I guess they're not calling for the waste to be picked up because they're not here to let them know that it needs to be picked up. So there's a lot of waste laying around in our neighborhood months after months after months. And there need to be some kind of plan put in place for them to, for them to know that the waste needs to be picked up in our neighborhood. Also, it should be a plan put in place for the landlords to know that their property needs to be taken care of in our neighborhoods also. And I don't know what we could do to get them to know that their property needs to be taken care of, but there need to be something put in place for them to know that their properties do need to be taken care of. And my mainest concern is about the waste in our neighborhood that is not being picked up. It's, they're just, and there was a clot truck in our neighborhood last Tuesday, and it only went to three or four houses, and then it was out the neighborhood, and it just getting to be a mess over there. I just don't know what's going on, but it's, and I, they had told us the first of the year that it was going to be better, but it's nothing better, it's seen to be getting worse. And that's my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Price. All right, now we move on to items under first reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment, JPD salaries and benefits, the amount of $304,826. Bobby and Chief Corley?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to let Mr. Arnold talk about the money part of it. But I wanted to speak with you again, like we did at the agenda review meeting on Thursday, and just kind of put some context into what the request is about. Across our profession in law enforcement, as we talked about before, we're struggling with recruiting, retention, hiring officers, keeping officers. There's a lot of things that go along with that, but a large portion of that is salary. We have neighboring jurisdictions that are comparable to us, they're starting their officers up around $53,000 a year, but we're currently at $46,000 a year. Our top end, senior officers are making around 62 to 3 THP, starting at 65. So it's a dilemma that we've been in for a little bit, and we're playing catch-up, but the proposal is basically to get our officers' salary commensurate with, one, what they're worth, what they're doing, they're carrying a heavy load, and to be comparable to comparable jurisdictions.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I'll speak to the couple of key points about the budget amendment, proposed budget amendment. So the total estimated cost of what the city's asking you to consider would be $1,050,000. That would include the salary costs, but it would also include the FICA cost and the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System cost that the city pays. So $1,050,000. Now, we did some work to look at our current budget that the council approved back in June for this year. There were some vacant positions included in that particular budget, along with the related benefits. And what we did, we looked at a couple of recent payrolls, projected those forward over the course of this year, and compared that to the budget, the annual budget. I think there's somewhere around $745,000 or so that's already been budgeted this year that's in the current budget. Now, that will potentially vary over the course of the year, depending if they have more vacancies or fewer vacancies, and also the related overtime that the cities and the police department is working to staff with those vacancies, right? But I think that's a pretty good number. So $1,050,000 for the total cost, $745,000, I think, is available in the current budget. So the proposed amendment would be for $304,826, and that would come from the general funds, unappropriated fund ballots that existed at the beginning of this year.
Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Sorry, go. You go.
Yes, will this help get, is any of this money going to go towards getting them take-home cars?
We already have in this capital budget that the council approved for June, the capital outlay to purchase around 40 vehicles in total, about 30 of those for the patrol division that will be pushed down for take-home vehicles.
And with what we're paying out in overtime right now because of the short staff, would it not change the numbers if we filled all the open positions?
Yes.
And we would end up saving some money?
Yes. Another thought on the budget, this proposed amendment, it's, we're at the 1st of September. The numbers that Chief Corley and I talked about are annual numbers, so there's a little cushion in there.
Yeah.
To begin with, so.
Let me go with Councilman Donnell, and then come back.
If this were to pass the council, when would these increases for the salaries, et cetera, take effect, next pay period?
So immediately?
Yes, we're starting pay period now, so you got to start for next pay. They're not this check they're getting on Friday, but the next paycheck.
Good.
All right, and you said about the senior officers, I think you said make $60,000 or something?
They currently, our senior officers are currently making $60,798.
And you said Howard Patrol starts?
At $65,000.
For new entries?
New entries.
Okay.
No experience.
Bye, Councilman Lawrence. So what Councilman Lawrence recognized.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the council, previous council and the mayors for the work they've done on this. In 2018, the starting salary was about $37,000, or you gave me that this morning, $35, I believe.
Right, $35,000.
And so to work to get it up to 50 has been a real commitment, a needed commitment. I follow this. A couple of questions of, so we're talking about this being a million-dollar cost.
Yes.
And that's going to be paid for because we don't have some of the officers we need. So if we were force enough to get staffed, then next year we'll have an extra million in the budget to cover these raises. Is that correct? I mean, and I'm for it, but I just want to make sure I understand.
Well, the cost, the salary increase now will be, will carry forward.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Just to comment also, it's good work that y'all have been done. Well, I'd like to compare ourselves to Murfreesboro a lot. Of course, they've got a lot of advantages we don't have. I think their starting salary now is around 54, give or take.
It's at 53.
53.
Yes, sir.
And we'll be at 50. And that sounds pretty good, but there is a little bit more good news there. The cost of living in Murfreesboro is 19% higher than Jackson. If you put that in the equation, we're now, our starting salary would be equivalent to $60,000. Now, you're not going to sell that, but I'm just spoiling that out as a, we're moving in the positive direction, and there's a lot of good work that's been done.
I think this is a good first step. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Councilman McNeil?
At what point do we get to where people start leaving the counties and come to work for our police department?
Right. We're going to have to be higher. We obviously are going to have to be higher, because what has happened over time, the smaller jurisdictions around us have caught back up close to or at our salary right now. And so to recruit and to get some to come to Jackson, we're going to have to have a better package overall.
What's our call volume compared to the counties around us?
Much more. You know.
You think we're 50% more, if not more?
I would say so. We're, what, 65, 70,000 in population, but that's census population. Our obvious day-to-day population that we service is probably more around 125,000 to 130,000 people. So yet the call volume is much greater.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'd like to echo something that Councilmember Lawrence said. This is a first step, and Chief, we commit to you and your team to make sure that we take additional steps in the future. We've got to make sure everything fits, but just know we plan to support you 100%. So that said, I would motion approval.
Second.
Motion several seconds.
We'll all hold a second. We're there with you.
Any further discussion, questions from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you so much.
Item two is proposed budget amendment for solid waste cameras, the amount of $27,960.
Yes, this proposed amendment would purchase, I'm sorry, well, I think 10, right?
12 is 10.
10 cameras. The funding for this would come from the solid waste, unappropriated fund balance at the beginning of the year.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
So move.
No.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Yeah, I got some discussion. I want to commend the department and the administration for the acquisition of these cameras that will be used to try to find the scofflaws who are just littering and dumping throughout Jackson, particularly in my district, District Four. District Four is not a dumping ground, and the use of these cameras will be very beneficial to my district as well as to the City of Jackson, because what's happening right now, that these despicable persons are coming in dumping, then the city picks it up, then they come back and dump again, then the city picks it up again, then they come back and dump again. It's just a vicious circle. And so with the use of these cameras, I feel that it will put a big halt or would decrease the number of persons who are coming through. So I wanted to just say that, because this is a good thing, and I hope we have a unanimous vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Are these movable, and can they, do they know where they are, or like the blue light on them or something?
These would be movable covert cameras.
Okay, good.
Any other questions from council? Do you have a motion, a second, correct?
Second.
Okay, all right. Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three is budget amendment for JPD insurance recovery, an amount of $27,668.
We have received the new revenue, as the mayor noted there, from an insurance recovery, and this budget amendment would appropriate that for the repairs.
Make a motion.
Have a motion and second, council. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, item four is proposed budget amendment for Street Department in the amount of $10,000.
No new funds involved here. This is a reallocation of budgeted funds already for the Street Department, moving it from the ARPA fund, some funds left over there, to the capital outlay fund so that they can complete the acquisition of some equipment that was budgeted for this year.
Any questions from council?
Motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Item five, proposed ordinance to amend Title 13 to add Section 108 to Chapter 1, chicken manure.
Mayor and council, the code committee hopes this is the last chicken ordinance recommendation we're going to bring to you, but due to some influx of a lot of chicken manure into the city in the last few weeks, this has become an important addition to our code. So this is a total ban on chicken manure, which is defined as anything that is a waste product from a chicken, no matter what kind of state it's in when it is used for fertilizer. It does have a caveat, and that caveat is that if this council chooses to later add a provision in the code that allows it, then in some other form, like pellet form or something like that, that is less of a smell, less offensive. If you choose to do so at a later date, this addition to the code would require a permit to be obtained before somebody could use chicken manure in that kind of fashion. The punishment, if you want to call it a punishment, the fine is a $50 a day fine, which is the max that city court can give. But I will say that it does allow, if a person's caught using chicken manure, they can also be held for a fine under another part of the code, which is offensive fumes. So there's a double wallop, if you will, that if someone uses chicken manure, that the city has some ammunition.
All right, any questions from council?
Ms. Lane, would you also address the environmental concerns, what could be going on and what might be coming down, please?
We're not really sure of it, but here's what we do know, that there are numerous federal and state lawsuits that are dealing with this new influx of chicken manure, like I spoke about a minute ago. And the water supplies, water, you know, that we drink, you know, is it being impacted? Those studies are showing that when used in large quantities, that it is impacting the water supply. It definitely impacts the air. What we're also studying, not we, but what environmentalists are studying, is whether breathing it in has any negative impact on the people who are in a five-mile radius of the use of chicken manure. Thank you.
All right, so I think we had a motion, Councilmember Holt. Have a motion from Councilmember Holt. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Item six is an ordinance to amend the text of the procurement code.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This ordinance is to get procurement code up to date per TCA. This item has also been approved through M task. This ordinance was written up by Teresa Luna, and this information has been approved by Louis Cobb. Since the cost of goods and services has been rising over time, raising the threshold up to $25,000 from the current $10,000 will not only help the procurement team, but also help get resources to our city departments faster.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one.
Thanks, Council.
All right, thank you. Move on to second reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment, local match for airways, phases one and two, in the amount of $154,000.
So move.
Second, a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment, insurance recovery for traffic signalization, an amount of $8,027.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three is proposed budget, proposed amendment, sorry, to Title 17 to add new chapter four, anti-litter code.
So move.
Have a motion, a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at Nolan Cove from OCFH Office Center Flood Hazard District to B5 FH Highway Business Flood Hazard District, comprised of 27.7 acres more or less.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to, eight to one abstain.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1049 through 1145 Whitehall Street, from AO Agricultural Open District to B5 Highway Business District to I2 Light Industrial District, comprised of 18.1 acres more or less.
Motion.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item six, consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article 6, Regulations Applying to a Specific to Several or to All Districts, Section 2, Fences, Walls, and Hedges.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item seven, consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance to the city of Jackson, Tennessee, Article Five, Specific District Regulations, Section 23, PRD Planned Residential Development District.
So moved.
Second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Move on to new business. Item one is consideration of a professional service contract with Kim Lee Horn for Old Humboldt Road Traffic Study.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This is a contract with, as stated, with Kim Lee Horn to do a traffic study on Old Humboldt Road. This is for, in preparation for and also just knowledgeable of the impacts that are in that area already and will come with the addition of a new Pope School, the development of Nolan Park over across from the bypass frontage road and also the apartment complex that's under construction now. So basically, this study will look at the improvements that are necessary to Old Humboldt Road to make sure that we adequately address traffic because, as you know, the bypass frontage road comes into Old Humboldt Road as it does on oil well, very close to the bypass. We want to make sure that nothing happens to the intersection at the bypass. So we'll look at all those things as part of this study.
Any questions from council?
How long is the study? When will the study be over?
They have stated about four months.
And then what's the cost of?
About $38,000 or so.
Thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion. Second and a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is consideration of a professional services contract with TLM for sidewalk design.
Every year, you have been gracious enough to include a million dollars in the budget for bike lanes, for sidewalks, for greenways. And this is the part of that project where we have to go in and design the actual sidewalks that are going in. We are concentrating on sidewalks right now because of the necessity to fill in these gaps that we have. Also, a lot of our sidewalks are in, they need repair in certain sections where parts of it have either crumbled or they've been overgrown. So this design work will go in and look at two projects for this year. The projects are Oil Road and Chester Levy to install a sidewalk along those two roads. So this will be the design work where they'll go in and actually survey where the right of way is and give us construction drawings that we'll put out as a bid package to get those sidewalks put in.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do. What's the cost of this?
Of this, this contract?
Yes.
I don't have that information with me.
I don't know, I can't remember the cost of the contract.
It's an hourly.
The hourly rates budgeted into a million dollars that we have in our capital budget for this.
But this will be paid out of the same money that we spend on the sidewalks themselves.
And you said this project is just for the, for the two areas you'd mentioned?
Yeah, oil wells estimated at about 525,000 and Chester Levy is somewhere in the neighborhood about 250, which gives us a little bit, about 150 left over to cover any ancillary and stuff that goes on.
And there's some subsequent time with other areas of the city, you know, particularly District Four that I represent, that be taken care of?
We have an ongoing project.
We have an ongoing project that's already in that area. All right, thank you very much.
How far is that from construction? Do you know, Stan?
How far?
The projects we have in those areas, we're all designed now?
They're, they're under construction right now. We had to stop and get some survey work because there was a discrepancy between where they thought the right of way was and where it actually was. So, so there was some design work that had to be kind of relooked at. So, so they should be out there performing these jobs right now.
All right, so you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three is consideration of contract services extension with ShotSpotter for JPD. Stan, don't go off, just go ahead and sit. We're just gonna come right back up.
I like exposure.
Okay, this is, you know, our ShotSpotter, which is our gunshot detection technology that the department's been using for many years, four, five years at least now. This is a continuation of the agreement to lock in the current price that we've been paying for the last couple of years for the next three years so the price doesn't rise on us. So this, this is just an extension of the original agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Get it tomorrow.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration of on-call contracts for planning and engineering services from Alexander Engineering, TLM, A2H and WOLD.
If you'll remember, last month, we had approved one for Kim Lee Horn and there were some questions about, you know, was that the only one that was gonna have on-call services? And you asked us to broaden our, our look and see if there were other firms that we could also bring into a similar arrangement. So that's what we've done today. These are on-call contracts with Alexander Engineering, TLM, A2H and WOLD. You have in your pack at the hourly rates. These are on-call services, so they're not, we don't spend money unless we contact them and tell them we need them to do something. And each one of these firms brings something different to the table. They all have specialties and, and strengths in certain areas. So we will utilize the ones that, like Alexander Engineering, for instance, does traffic-related engineering, traffic studies, looks at signals, timings, that sort of thing. So if we needed that type of service, we could go to Alexander Engineering and they would charge us the hourly rates that you are approving today. Same way goes for the other firms. If we needed their services, then we can reach out to them. And we feel like that that's, that is a better way to handle this because, under our current arrangement, we have to do an RFQ. That takes about a month and a half. Then we have to make a selection process and it just delays the projects because we can't get them off the starting block until we have these services retained. So, so this will help us move more efficiently and get our projects moving quicker.
All right, any questions from council?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Item five is proposed ARPA budget amendment for sportsplex shade structure in $76,385. Have a motion from Councilman Don.
Second.
Several seconds. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Just like getting up and down, Bobby, just to get your exercise in. Item six, proposed budget amendments ARPA community support in the amount of $185,000. And Claire will lead us off and then she'll call up the agencies in the order that they're prepared to talk in.
Yes, good morning, Council. This request is for $185,000 and comes from three different proposals. Area Relief Ministry for $50,000, Dream Center for $100,000 and Salvation Army for $35,000. We have representatives from each organization if you have questions for them.
Let's start.
Thank you.
Start with ARM and then do Dream Center and then Salvation Army.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Want to give us a little, just overview of what this is for?
Yes, Mike Robith, Area Relief Ministries. I've got my executive, I'm sorry, my chairman of the board, Dr. Martha Robinson, and my director of operations, Fred McKinney. We've been offered several grants that ARM has been able to use to fund helping homeless, to helping people that are the most in need in our community with permanent housing. Most of you know about Room in the Inn. We lost several churches during the pandemic, so we're down to about 25 churches and it's, we're having to actually fund rather than just have volunteers for Room in the Inn, which is fine. We made it well through that and we appreciate the mayor opening the civic center during that time. The civic center had about 45 people a night and we did too. And we did it for the entire year with a substantial strain to ARM. When we'd been there 47 years, it was very difficult to stay open then. Now, we're making the proposal for the $50,000 to help ARM. Most of the grants that we have that we work from are reimbursable grants. So a lot of small nonprofits don't have a lot of money in the bank. We're doing well and we're very grateful for the churches and the city helping as well. So now we're asking for this $50,000 to help with that additional strain that we have and that we'll also be able to use these funds that we have. We've got an additional $200,000 grant over three years that will allow us to help people with rental assistance, emergency assistance, you know, across the board. And I have Fred McKinney here to say a little bit more about what that grant covers.
Yeah, the grants cover utility assistance, rental assistance, social security cards or whatever the different homeless needs may be. The grants this year are allowing us to be able to do more supportive services for families that we support need clothing or transportation, like bus passes. We'll be able to do those different things. So with this, it would help us kind of offset some of the operating costs that we can continue to serve. It takes about, with a reimbursement grant, takes about 45 days to get reimbursed for the funds that we spend up top. So this money would kind of help us offset those costs.
You know, the main thing is it helps us to take advantage of some of those opportunities that are out there. You know, clearly we have to have the money in hand before we can expend it. And so this, creating this fund would allow us to do that, which would enable us to serve more people. And as you know, every dollar that's spent in this economy enriches the entire community. And so it would help us to continue not only serve the populations that we serve, but also to contribute to the fiscal health and responsibility of this city and county.
All right, any questions from council?
I have one and I'm in favor of this, I'm gonna vote for it. But the part that you said that I don't understand, the utility assistance, if they're homeless, what assistance are needed for utilities?
We have rapid rehousing where we have homeless to be housed so we can pay their rent and utilities for up to a year if they enroll in the program. So those funds are used to do that, to get them housed. So if they're homeless, we have them to be housed.
Okay.
And we pay their rent.
I got you.
For self-sufficiency, yes.
And I want to thank you because you see people and deal with people that are not the prettiest and they don't have a lot of options. And so to continually, Mike and Martha and Fred, to take care of them and help them get stable again, it's a wonderful thing for our community. So thank you.
All right, any additional questions from council? And council, we can, we can do this two, one of two ways. We want to break it down and vote on each individual distribution. We can do that or we can group them all as one after you hear from all three.
I suggest we do it all as one after we hear from all three.
Thank you. And next up, we'll have Dream Center.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Gail and we are the Dream Center. And last year, we housed over 315 women and children. We fed 100, over 159,000 meals to our community, not just our residents, about 55,000 overnight stays. And we are building this new building and we will be able to, within two years, triple of the amount of people that we're helping right now. And we could fill it up today.
So your request is the 100,000 for, for the capital expenditures for the construction of the building?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Mike Ferris, I'm the treasurer of the Dream Center. We've raised a little over $6 million from generous citizens of this company, this city and area, the great companies here in Jackson and a lot of the great churches here in Jackson. We're just a little bit short, a couple hundred thousand dollars short on our capital budget of being able to fund this. This will be a great shot in the arm to get us there and like Gail said, be able to triple what we're doing. I've never seen anything like this thing. I've been involved in giving, giving hope to people that had generational hopelessness. And it's just, I can't wait to, and this lady right here can do more with a dollar than I've ever seen done in my life. I'm amazed at our food budget every month, but that again goes back to some great people that help support this, this effort. And, and when Gail has extra things and she doesn't have room for it, she redistributes it to other organizations. So I hope you can consider this. They've been operating on basically about $400,000 a year of operational money. That number's gonna be going to about a million dollars when we triple what we're doing. And we think that, you know, we're very confident that our, our people that help fund the capital project will transition to operational donors. And we certainly hope that the city will stay involved too because her and her team are turning out, turning back to the, to their communities productive citizens. And children are getting the better start in their schools with better help and better guidance and better mentorships. So we appreciate your past support and look forward to, to your vote today and then hopefully keeping us teed up for some future support.
Thank you.
Very thankful for what y'all are doing.
Yes.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Chairman, I'm being a little nosey here. How soon do y'all expect to move in?
Well, I heard from the contractor, we'll start moving furniture in on the 25th of this month.
Wow.
I would just like to say hello. Area Relief Ministry, Ms. Gail, Mike and then also the Mark coming up. These are three great organizations that we couldn't have picked three good organizations that always end up giving back. What he said about Ms. Gail was she have things that, enough stuff that she shared with the whole community. I mean, she'd always call other organizations, say, hey, look, I got this, we need this. Same thing with Mike, if I call him, so I need a bed, you know, hey, come on, get it. You know, so it's an organization like that. Same thing with Salvation Army getting ready to come up. I mean, it's through organizations that are giving back with our community and they also are helping people. So we appreciate all you're doing.
Very much.
We appreciate you all. All right, thank you. Next up, Salvation Army. Captain, Kansas City.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is kind of like family here.
Say again?
This is kind of like family here.
It is. First, I'd like to say thank you all very much for your consideration. Johnny, thank you for your, your kind comment acknowledging the hard work that we do. Julie, thank you for your prayer where you, you mentioned the needs of the people in the city. Right? And I felt that when you prayed that because where we work, we intercede on behalf of those that need it and those that have it. And so this morning, thank you. In 2021, just to give some context, the US government released the American Rescue Plan Act funds to ensure growth and equitable recovery from the pandemic. The city of Jackson, since then, has prioritized vulnerable populations by funding multiple efforts. That's important, especially in a city like this. In 2022, our city awarded the Salvation Army 104,000 to protect those that are disproportionately affected, particularly the senior citizens and those that are living with disabilities. Our work has made economic and social impact on the lives of over 2,500 households in our community. The city has championed the priorities of the empowerment tax course where we are able to improve community health and wellness and add to the quality of life of many citizens in our community. Today, we're requesting another 35,000 or more to continue the work that we have been doing over the past several years. We'll continue to leverage partnerships, donor funds and volunteers to reach and serve the most people possible.
My name is Emily Riget and I'm the Community Engagement Specialist at the Salvation Army. I get to meet with individuals who come in for our emergency assistance on Tuesdays, so later today. And so I wanted to tell just a small story about someone that we were recently able to assist with his utilities. So this past month, I met with a senior in our community that had just received two life-threatening diagnoses and needed assistance to keep his utilities from disconnection. He had been granted his disability benefits already, but his fixed income cannot cover both his monthly expenses and his medical expenses. He's very typical for the type of people that I've been meeting with. Our population is usually seniors or those with, who are on disability who have a fixed income. He had been looking for a part-time job to cover what his disability could not, but his options were limited due to those health conditions. So the Salvation Army was able to make a pledge with JEA to ensure that his utilities would not be disconnected in the following days. So he had already been facing that disconnection. And due to the ARPA funds that we have already received and had utilized, we were able to keep him from disconnection so that he could focus on putting the extra money that he did have, which was not very much, towards those medical bills.
One of the points that I do want to make is that we work well with other organizations, right? So we heard from the Dream Center, who Gail called me on Friday with a lot of eggs, boiled eggs, that were to be shared in the community. We work well with area relief ministries, and so there is collaboration amongst the nonprofit organizations. And so I thank you again for your consideration, and I look forward to continued collaboration amongst the nonprofits as we serve those that are disadvantaged and vulnerable.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I make a motion.
A motion, a bunch of seconds before the approval. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Item seven is consideration of an amended resolution approving land purchase sale agreement with the Industrial Development Board for Great Wolf Lodge.
This is the property Great Wolf Lodge is interested in purchasing on Ridgecrest. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to look at it, but what this does is transfer the property to the IDB, and the IDB holds it to make sure that the deal goes through and then enters into an agreement with Great Wolf. We're selling the property at $35,000 an acre. The amount is about 230.36 acres, but they have the right to ask for more if they need it. Do y'all have any other questions? I'd be glad to answer them, but I don't want to.
Any questions from council?
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
If I could, Mayor, maybe this is to reassure people that Great Wolf Lodge is coming. Everybody always asking that question, when is it coming?
It's an arduous process, but we're getting there.
Yes, but it is coming.
Item eight is consideration of a resolution authorizing EDA grant application for McKeller Sykes Airport.
So moved.
Motion.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion?
No.
Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
To tell you, Mayor, one thing on that, I, I would like to just have one of the representatives there for no more than just 90 seconds.
Give the overview of what it is.
The overview of what it is, but also to include that overview about the projection that Jackson, Tennessee, will at some point quickly, soon, receive and start obtaining commercial jet, jet planes. Just, just mention that, please, sir.
I think Richard wants United Airlines, Delta, Southwest.
No pressure, Steve, no pressure.
Let the prop planes be gone.
Good morning, council. My name is Steve Smith. I'm the Executive Director of Jackson Madison County Airport Authority, position I've held for 15 years, and this is not the first council that I have addressed this subject with. However, we are at the point now where I see more going on, not only at the airport, but in the entire area that I've seen in a long time. Pardon me, we have a study that has been done by Chamber of Commerce. The study shows that Ford and Blue Oval will move almost 8,000 passengers a year through an airport in the area. We hope it's Jackson and not Memphis. And one of the things on the grant that we're trying to do now will be able to enhance the infrastructure. In the last two weeks, councilman, I've had two conversations with companies that provide jet service. That basically is one of my goals over the next six months or so, to, to make sure that we have talked to those people that are interested. Many of you remember back in the 70s, 60s and 70s, we had jet service here. That was when the federal government required the, the airlines to have bid routes and to get Nashville and to get Memphis. Delta Airlines, for example, had to bid Jackson because that's where the things stopped. 1977, that went away, and so did jet service for Jackson. Now with the reg, regional jets, the 70-passenger and 125-passenger jets that are there, with the, what we're looking for from Ford Motor Company along with all the other industries that we have now is a, is a look for a route into the north and northeast, and so we're working on that. We, we, we have $88 million on the table in improvements. As you know, Jackson, McKeller Sykes was named after a wartime Senator, K.D. McKeller, and a Vietnam War hero, Buster Sykes. We're still dealing with a lot of infrastructure that was left us in 1945. This will allow us to, to help make some of that new and modern. That's what it's gonna take to attract jet service, and that's what we're working on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, if y'all don't know this man, he has done an outstanding job the last year, and his staff, he's got a great staff too. But they've had some very difficult times as they worked through, and we're really blessed to have people like you in those positions.
Number nine, item nine is consideration of a resolution to approve consolidated annual performance and evaluation reports, 2022, 2023.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Mark, were you gonna come up, Mark? Well, then, we got some, come on up, come on up. We got, we got some discussion. Yeah, they, there's, I think, yeah, come up, give a motion, second, there's some questions, so. If Mark's gonna come, I'm not gonna deny Mark the opportunity to come up here now.
Mayor, I, I have to, I have to make a phone call before 10. So I'm in favor of this, so I'll be in the back, but if I'm not here, I'm in favor.
Flip it up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. One of you faces, I am, Mark, we're Executive Director of the Jackson Housing Authority, and Latony Fason is the Deputy Director slash Director of Community Development here at the Jackson Housing Authority.
I had the pleasure to speak to you on the phone. I hadn't been by to see you on that.
Yes, sir.
And I thank you for that. This is education for me. I don't know exactly what's going on.
Yes, sir.
But I, I noticed that we have funds of 2.7 million dollars, give or take, and I think I see on the expenditures, that we spent about 900,000.
That's correct.
We have about a 1.8 million dollar carryover for next year, is that?
That's correct, and, and that difference is basically the funds that were allocated for our non-congregate homeless shelter that we're going to construct.
You answered my second question. What was that money gonna be used for?
Yes, yes.
And that's gonna be used, okay.
Yes.
I do have one other question on the community development expenditures. There is a Jona Affordable Housing for 289,000. Don't have a problem, but it says it services two families. Is that correct?
Well, so, so what Jona is, Jona Affordable Housing Organization, they do acquisition and renovation of housing to rent to low-income individuals. So that 289,000, they acquired two homes, which was kind of costly in this day and time, as well as renovated those two homes to rent.
That's a deal to get two houses
Yeah.
in a good condition at that price
Yes.
to house two families.
Okay, so are these houses given to the families then?
No, they rent them at, at a, at an affordable rental.
Okay, okay.
Right, yes, to low-income people.
Okay. Are you familiar with?
Thank you all for what you're doing very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussions? Do we have a motion and a second? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10 is a consideration of a contract for muni code.
Motion.
A motion and a second? Mr. Drew, you want to give, let me see, we have a motion and a second on the table, give a brief description of what muni code is.
It's gonna take all our ordinances, put them online, we'll be able to update them in real time. Citizens will be able to see them in real time. It's been a long time coming.
So as opposed to M test we have now, it takes six months to a year to update that, so.
So moved.
All right, have a motion and a second already.
Second.
Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Item 11 is consideration of committee and board appointments. Start out with city council, member board appointments.
Will the approval as presented?
Second. A motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget appointment for Julie Holt, Frank McBean, and Johnny Dodd from that to Larry Lawrence, Julie, or Larry Lawrence, Frank McBean, and Johnny Dodd.
I think there should probably be some discussion on this.
All right, we got, we got a motion first, we gotta have a second for the discussion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
No.
No, we already need a second.
I thought you said you need a second.
No, we don't need a motion and a second.
Okay. So you have a, is a motion for an amendment? Is there a second for the amendment?
I'll second for the discussion.
You have a second? Okay, all right. Any discussion?
I, I, I'm just wondering on what pretense.
Well, I feel like Larry has more experience and is more knowledgeable, and that's the reason why I made that motion.
He has a math and physics degree.
I'm sticking with what I said.
I have an accounting degree.
I'm sticking with what I said.
And I've owned multiple businesses.
Okay, so, all right, okay. We are gonna address the questions publicly about this, and so are there any other discussion on the amendment? All right, so this is what we're, we're voting on the amendment at this point of the change in the Budget Committee. So council, please vote.
Three to five no's.
All right, so the motion, amendment fails.
I had the time to come on right then.
The beauty shop's calling.
All right. So back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one no.
Okay. Item B is keep Jackson beautiful board, the appointment of Anita K. Archer, Carrie Knox, Angie Mays, Jennifer Greer, and Beverly Lawrence.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item 12 is sunshine of the budget amendment is less than 10,000. Item 13 is consideration of invoices over 10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Any other business coming for the council? Meeting is adjourned.